Good evening, I will now call to order the June 12th, 2025 City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Administrative Secretary Sean Faye, please call the roll.
Annie Chang Long?
Here.
Ed Pearson?
Here.
Vincent Meeker?
Here.
Dean Serwin?
Here.
Is Kenny there?
No, not yet.
Okay, well, we have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment in online?
No.
No public comment in person, so I will now declare the public comment period closed. And we can go to our, oh, sorry, does anyone have any reordering additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing done, I, we will continue to the next item. Approval of the minutes of the May 8th, 2025 Library Board of Trustees Meeting.
I have one comment, but the recording froze right when you made your comment, so we tried to remember what it was. So if you want to look at that to make sure.
It's roughly.
Yeah, we just, it just froze and we couldn't quite. Okay, if you're, I just wanted to draw your attention to that.
It's efficient.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I get a second, okay. Motion and seconded, Sean, can you take the roll?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Min.
Thank you, Ben. Sure, Annie Chang Long?
Yes.
Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Vincent Meeker?
Yeah.
Edward Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Um, well, do we need to wait for Kenny for this?
No, I think we can, um, no, I think we can start this item. Um, the, the nature is a little different than what we had hoped, but.
So the Administrative Policies Review Committee will conduct policy discussion.
Yeah, so I think, I don't know what all men might have to share, but I'll just let you know that. Uh, we met, uh, staff, Maida and I met with Min and Kenny about two weeks ago. And, um, we're looking at the draft that, that we men have created and worked on. Um, and so the staff then have been, and probably spent like six hours together looking at it since we got back. So, um, this was a great starting point for us and it's made it very easy for us to kind of, um. You know, go back through all the notes we've had or things people have said, we should remember that or that, you know. We're just trying to like, get it all and then wanted to, hopefully, we're hoping we could bring it back to you today, like in a graph that you guys could really look at. But we just couldn't get it ready. So we, um. We're close, we're very close, like we've been through the whole thing. Um, so next time we will have that for you and we can also then share it with you guys first before the meeting, so you have another chance.
Okay.
Um, I think the biggest difference between, um, or the biggest conversation the staff has, have been having. This draft kind of breaks the behaviors into levels and, um. Some people bring it into like types of behavior instead, you know, so, um, you know. Hygiene and food and separate, you know, into like the type of thing, not then, not how bad it is. And so I think we're leaning toward that, that approach, um, because it's very hard to, you know. Creating a disturbance could be a level three, it could be a level one, so where do you have, you know, where do you put it? I mean, there are obviously things that are clearly. Going to fall into the high level worst category, but there's a lot of things that don't, aren't easily categorized in that way. So if you're organizing them that way in the, in the policy, then you still have to address the issue of if you do this. What's the consequence? So that would have to be sort of included, but, um. That's where we're sort of going right now, but when we get the draft back for you guys to look at, that will be really helpful, you can help us think that through as well. You have anything else, Min, about that?
Um, I think the only other thing is just when we, Kenny and I met with Kathy and the staff, just trying to think through. I think for you guys, like what's internal facing and external facing, because I do think there's things that. You want to be clear with the patrons, like these are all the behaviors by categories that are not allowed here. But then for staff, it's sometimes easier around like the consequences, because I think that's what's difficult now is like. If you did this 10 times or if it was this type of violation. So I think we were talking a little bit about that, like organizing it so that it's easier for patrons to digest by categories. But then also trying to figure out how to ensure it's easy for the staff to know what the consequences are. And then Kenny is, I think he's looking at the internet policy and then we talked about the. It being tied to the municipal code, like a lot of consequences. But it was really helpful to meet with the staff and just hear from them about how they would apply it and how to like reorganize it to make it easiest for them.
It's interesting because I reached out to the library directors group and said, can you guys send me your printed versions of this stuff? Because I was just curious to see, right, like how are they presenting it to the public? And you already know this, but you know, everybody is doing it differently. Some people are doing it by like severity of the behavior, some people are doing it by category, some people have a matrix to help you figure out the consequences. Some people don't, I mean, it's just all over the map, so you kind of have to figure out what makes most sense to you, but, um. And, and you know, some of the bigger systems that obviously have a lot of resources and expertise have really nice, you know, materials and, uh. Nice ways of communicating the information. Um, LA County just has a sign that has four things on it, it's like be safe. Treat people properly, you know, it's like, and then, but then he said his staff. We're like, we need more, you know, we need more, so, so now he's like, so we, they do have the big poster that, you know, tons of rules. And he's like, we left them post that in like two places, but you know. So it's, it's just interesting and it's been helpful to see some of those printed material, so we can share those next time, too. Um, yeah, we're, I, I think we're making a lot of progress and this getting this draft was sort of. Got us over, um, you know, to kind of get us going. So next time we'll be able to have you guys really take a look at it and give us some feedback.
Does anyone have any questions for Min and Kathy?
Um, so the, I'm understanding that the. You're basically there, you just hadn't coalesced into a workable presentation?
Um, into a draft that we're ready to show you. Again, Min created a draft and then we've been working on Min's draft. And it was just not quite, we're just not, but we're ready to bring it here, you know, language.
Next month?
Yeah, yeah.
Will we meet in June?
We do, I mean, we can, um, we do, um, I think sometimes we've not met in August more, if we don't meet, it's typically been in August, but we don't always do that. We can talk about that, we should probably talk about vacations and who's going to be around, but yeah, we should meet in July unless you guys have other.
Do we take a motion on it then?
No.
Oh, okay, okay. So then we'll see a presentation of it. Thank you, Ben. Um, library community center site planning project updates, um, Dean or?
Uh, I'm going to lean on Kathy to assist me with this. Um, so you all have, uh, the agenda item. Uh, I wrote and said, gosh, it looks like I've seen this before, you know, three times now. Um, we, uh, it's been on the city's website, public documents, obviously. Um, and we've met and went through this, which personally, I think we could have gone a little faster through the, um. The graphs and pie charts and whatnot, and I will leave you to look at that. Advice to say that our library is very busy, our library is very crowded, both with people and with things. Um, uh, and, uh, we could do better, uh, with more room. Uh, people generally want the library to be a library and they want the senior center to be a senior center, oddly enough. Um, the survey results, there were some things that we expected to see, like people want, would love to see, uh. In the community center cooking classics, and that's one of the points that I keep talking about. Where there'd be great overlap, senior center has a kitchen. When it's not used, it can be used by the library, the community center to offer classics, et cetera, et cetera. Um, there was a little bit of discussion, uh, and there's some stats about, you know, where people live and how they get here and household incomes and all of that. Of the people who responded and I'll leave you to look at that. Um, what I'll point out is if you look at page 15, uh, visits per capita, we have the second highest number of visits. Per capita of all the relatively local, uh, public libraries. The only one with more in fact, um, is, uh, San Marino, and that's just because they've got less than half as many people as we did. Um, so they get a higher per capita rate. We are. In terms of our square footage, uh, we, we have less than a foot of square feet per resident. Um, which is not, not as small as, as you might think, um, there's not, uh, we don't need to increase it hugely, but. There is of note, but we do have more square footage per resident than, than most. Uh, materials checked out, again, we're busy library, uh, fourth most, um, uh, busy, uh, uh. Again, uh, San, we're much busier in terms of checkout than, uh, San Marino, but, um. Uh, so you can, you know, then you can look at all these stats, I think it's really important to, to consider, uh, the. Page 19 gives a good one, that compares the, uh. Square footage of materials compared to seats, we're second worst. Um, we have, uh, square footage of, uh, 4.73 square feet of materials, uh, and only 114 seats. Um, uh, and then you look at something like again, what's benchmark rest to San Marino, they have 200 seats. Um, uh, compared to 3.4, uh, oh, one for seats of, uh, or two, material per square foot, so we're again. Very crowded with stuff, uh, not a lot of places for, as many places for people to sit. Um. Uh, which again, kind of pulls into the idea that increasing the overall footprint of the available space. Uh, would, would probably be good. Then we looked at some, uh. Concepts for the engagement, uh, next set of engagement, and I, I missed, uh. That portion of it, but what we did talk about was, um, there's three sort of concepts for what we would do in general. Um, tear everything down, start over. Uh, leave everything as is and just remodel, or in between, leave the community room. And, uh, I believe they'd leave these columns, the colonnades on the sides, not this part of the building. But the sides, because there is some historic element to those, and then build, uh, the new facility. Uh, on whatever footprint, and then there's the question of what would that footprint look like? Um, and that brings in the issue of balancing the, uh. Park, Kevin and I were joking about, uh, it's like a walk in the park. Literally to get here, um, and so we want to make sure that we maintain the park, the canopy, the, uh. Obviously the Morton fig is sacrosanct, but there's also many other trees, and there was a lot of, uh, people who, uh, you know, commented that they. Want to be able to use the park and to enjoy those trees still, so, uh, that's the sort of the, the question, and I believe that the, uh. What was decided was, rather than saying to the community in the next round, here's three choices picked, it's. There's three choices, as I've just laid them out, none of them are absolutely perfect, but the maintain the community room. And, uh, raise everything else and, and rebuild from that, uh, certainly checks more boxes with, they had a, uh. Is that slide in here?
No, because, um, that was really for the ad hoc committee, so the, the meeting, the ad hoc committee was asked to. Direct the, direct the next steps in terms of what's going to be for the public to look at. So I'm not showing those slides here because they're now back to the drawing board to prepare that material for everyone.
They, they had presented them with, they, they made it a fait accompli that the, the one in the middle was it, because it had all green checks as opposed to some having yellow circles and have their red axes. And we were discussing how some of those green checks are maybe yellow circles. Um, so they were going to revisit that, but, uh, I believe the intention is to come back with, there, there's these two choices. The only one that really feasibly makes sense is this, and these are the reasons why, but, um. Uh, we'll, we'll see what those materials actually come back, uh, in, in July for, for further engagement. And then it's a matter of, again, footprint and, uh. Getting more buy-in from the community, uh, as to, you know, do they agree that, yes, this is something we want to do? Uh, and how to, uh, to manage that would be the next steps, and then of course, there'd be a final presentation to the, uh. Uh, city council may have to approve and go into the next step, which would be a design phase. That pretty much summarized?
Pretty much, that pretty much summarizes it, um, if you want to see the entire presentation that. Dean's talking about, it is available on the ad hoc committee page. Um, and we did leave, leave a little bit early, and I think where we ended up is that, um. The ad hoc committee will actually recommend. A choice, but be very transparent about the other choices that were presented and how, why they are recommending what they're recommending. Um, and, and he covered that, right? Not probably realistic to recommend starting from scratch on the site, and it's also. What's the point of doing this, a poorly remodeling, you know, that's really, you know, so I think that, um. It, it is sort of a fait accompli, I mean, it's not, but, but that's not what the architect can say, you know?
Really does make sense, because the, the historical nature, even though it's not, as we've learned, not the, and that's going to be something we're going to have to keep pressing on people, because. At least 50% of the population believes that that is the Carnegie Library. Um, it's not, but it is the 1931 edition, there is some historical nature to it, and it's a lovely building and it is feasible to, to continue to utilize that. Um, it's not a perfect world to continue to utilize it because of great issues and things like that. Um, but as Kathy said, you know, one, one of the things that they went into in San Mateo is, and I've, I've alluded to. Is the amount of space this library was built in. It's not as bad as the little craftsman houses that have all those little tiny, tiny, tiny rooms. Um, but all the newer buildings, when we went on the tours, uh, have much more expansive open space. Uh, and that would again, uh, make it more feasible to utilize for multiple purposes. Have some areas that could be utilized by the library, the senior center, depending on, on use in that moment. Um, having, uh, not necessarily modular, uh, construction, so it can move around, but modular in terms of being able to utilize things differently. Um, and, uh, yeah, I mean, it's just. I think the community would revolt if we said we're going to tear down the, that building for the new year. Um, it'd be not quite as bad as the tree, but, uh, it'd be a close second. So it's just not feasible and remodeling this with all the little tiny rooms and low ceilings and doesn't make sense either.
It's, and it would cost more.
Feasible, yeah.
More than the budget.
More per square foot, because then we, we'd have to bring everything up to current code anyway, while trying to keep that, that building, so.
Are there budget estimates yet for everything or considerations or are they?
I thought they acquired their contract.
It will eventually.
They will then.
Yeah, so by the presentation afterwards.
We have to give them more.
More things to like, what, what is we want?
There's general benchmarks of what. What the architects believe are, is a square, per square foot kind of cost, that, um, uh. My understanding is that that is, um, not necessarily fits to the zone, that it has to cost that much. But it, it will certainly be, um, an expensive undertaking.
I did ask, um, we had a project management team meeting or a meeting, I think after that. Or maybe it was before, but I had asked, excuse me, Dawn, the, the, um, architect that leading the project. About that and how accurate those cost estimates are, and she said, even though we're, we're in this early phase, it's. Very accurate, I mean, right, they hire people who do that, that's what they do, and she said that, um, but obviously, yeah, you, you know. More or less different materials, you can bring that number up and down, but, um, it's, it sounds to me like, even at this. Beginning kind of site plan phase for the design work, we would have a pretty good idea of, of the overall cost, of the different choices that are available.
It's certainly, it's going to be, uh. A shocking number, I think, but not, not so real unrealistic.
The one thing I just, I would draw your attention to is on the last two slides, the first one is just showing you. Um, the first of the last two is showing you, uh, again, a little bit about what. The, they may see in terms of the sites and what do you think about some sites, but the last page. This is the other thing that they'll do in the second round of engagement is try to get at kind of design values and what people. You know, I mean, they're not doing design work, but trying to get some understanding of the community's, you know, interest in. Style and, you know, materials and colors and textures and, you know. All of that kind of stuff, so that should be interesting to have that out there and see what people think.
Have a water front terrace, it's not good.
You're putting.
Let the kids have a splash pad.
Yeah, splash pad, yeah, so, but I think, you know, they're not doing design work, but part of the issue is, you know, you, you're creating the site plan that you want to get people excited about, so what they at least can. You know, when they're doing some kinds of theory, vague mockups, they can at least be bringing in some of these kind of aesthetic things that people have indicated they.
And they'll indicate also, to an extent, what the, the overall footprint would be, where, where on the. Rock. Those buildings.
They're giving us a sketch at the end.
Not a sketch, but more, uh, uh, a shape and where, where it might sit.
Do we get a picture of it?
No, that's.
You don't get a picture.
Well, I mean, or at the end of their whole contract in October.
October, again, this is site plan, this is, these are the things that you would like to be in this new facility. But not a drawing or even a detailed description of the facility, that's the design there is.
They do, I mean, it does, um, you know, they've gathered all the information together and have a very detailed. What they call a program, which is the overall, what they're putting together, so the square footage for all the different spaces. I mean, that's how they're coming up with proposals is based on the need, so. Looking at the need and exactly how much space we need for all these different things gives you these different options, so if we had. You know, the baseline is however many square, thousands of square feet. If we added some, you know, more meeting rooms, we'd be here, so it's sort of, that's a piece of it, too, is the, it's not just the footprint, it's also, again, and that ties to cost. But, um, but also kind of the size and, and what do people feel is feasible or acceptable on this site? Um, but it is, it will be very visual, but it's not, it's not like a rendering of a, we're not going to get that, that's the design phase that would be, um. A couple of million dollars, probably.
To do the design.
Mm-hmm, like to do design but not construction documents.
Like not engineering.
Yeah.
That's just design, engineering or.
So you know, yeah, so you're going from here with the site plan and now you know what people said they want, what they need. How much it's going to cost and then, um, you know, city council has to make a decision about. Whether or not they want to go forward or whether the next step is to get that design work done, because that's, um. More interesting to people or realistic or whatever.
If you're going to raise money, you got to show people.
What their concepts are.
One thing we did also talk about was what will not be included, I think there was some, uh, which I was kind of surprised by, that there was some confusion. With them as to whether or not there was going to be as part of the community center aspect. Uh, uh, physical fitness area, like a gym aspect, and we're very clear, no, that, that's not in this. You know, a yoga room, stretching class, kind of, uh, multipurpose room, yes. Uh, boxing ring, tennis courts, though that, that's, that's different facilities in the town.
Yeah, I mean, I think the reason they were talking about that is because there are best practices or standards from like the national park. You know, I don't know what the organization is about. How much square footage of different types of space you should have in a community and what's the, the right amount and, um. And typically, in, in these types of spaces, the gym is a piece of it. Um, so you have to account for that and, and recognize you're not going to have a gym, so there's a piece of your. Programmatic activity that you're going to have to do someone, so that I can get the reason that, like a basketball gym, um, was discussed.
A great source of revenue, I know so many basketball teams that would pay top dollar per hour. Like multiple, including the YMCA, the YMCA is begging this community. For more basketball parks, it's one of, uh, basketball parks, I, it's not a library issue, but on record, it's, is one of the biggest issues that. Also could have a revenue stream behind it within rentals. I guess I was wondering, is there any discussion around, um. Excavation and going under and height limits on a library a, at this point, I don't know if that's off the table or.
It was interesting because there was public comment decrying that they were, uh, talking about building underground parking. And no one was talking about building underground parking, they were just highlighting that there's availability. To do, there's space that we could do it if we wanted to, I don't believe that there's any intention or, or thought to, towards underground parking. I've long thought that, you know, it, it might be interesting to, uh, to go down and, but with a.
Ransom or something.
Yeah, excavation, um, there is, there is a rather significant grade, it doesn't seem like it, but there really is from that side to that side. Um, so there, there could be some.
In a whole story, where, right, like you can see it right there.
Yeah, and, and they, I mean, kids are very confused about that. And I think as architects, right, they, they have all kinds of ideas that are part of.
This piece.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, one of the things I asked them to do is can you? Come back with, help us understand how you could make the community room functional for us? Like how is it not just a big rectangle, taking up 3,000 square feet and ruining my whole, you know? And she, and, oh yeah, oh, it's going to be great, like they, they, they had, they think about it differently, and I said, I don't think we can. The average person maybe can't perceive that or, and it would be helpful to. Say, you know, when they're showing people, we're keeping the community room and here's kind of what's possible with it, and that's true of the great, I mean, they're already. You know, oh, we took the grade and we did this, but that's just not really what we're doing right now.
Design, yeah.
But I'm sure that at the end, that type of information will be part of the discussion and, you know.
Because they're already talking about number of floors and, and where, where it would be two-story or more and where it would be. Uh, so that, that'll be part of this, but again, the actual, this is what, this is what the building looks like, this is where the, you know, is it U-shaped? Is it, is it a square, is it a rectangle, is it, uh, that's all going to be, so. I remember when they were here, I asked the question about whether that was a challenge, the grade, I think it's 10 feet. Higher on one than the other, no, it's an opportunity, it's, yeah.
All these ideas that I'm like, what, how, why, how, what, I don't know. So I'm excited to see more of what that means and how they're envisioning it, I mean, again, even though they're not doing the actual. Design of the building, they're trying to present us with what's possible.
I'm sure they hope they'll get to do that.
Well, I'm sure they do, yeah, you know, what are, what are the possibilities and what are the limitations, height limit, you know? Structurally, I mean, again, it's not like you would do if you're doing engineering and construction, really building it, but. They're doing a very comprehensive look at what can be done here, so, um.
So what does the next step with the ad hoc committee look like after, I guess, is it October, is it?
July, July, they're going to come back with a revised version of this that's more geared to. We're going to take this back to the community, because that's the next step, is another round of community engagement. Um, and then, then they'll take that data and cover this overall site plan. Which we will tinker with and then they'll present to city council for verbal. And then it'll be a question of whether the city council says, yes, we like this, we want to take it to the next step and. Find the money to.
Develop architectural plans for it, that would be that, I don't know.
Protect the design and then would be, if we approve the design, then we build architectural plans and raise the money.
Well, and I think what typically would hap, what should happen and what will happen is that. The ad hoc committee will be making a recommendation to the city council and staff as well, sort of. But that will come to them saying, here's the site plan, our recommendation is that you, the city council, consider. Finding the money to do design work, consider starting a fundraising campaign, consider whatever it may be, so this body of 15 people have to. Figure that out and it includes two council members, so, you know, it'll, it, I, you know, I think that the council members will. You know, have a strong, um.
Incentive?
Well, you know, I mean, they're the ones that, I don't know, it should be an interesting discussion, right, like if two of the council members. Have a strong feeling about what should be the next step, and they're the ones who are going to vote yea or nay on whatever is recommended. It, you know, the committee will have to come to terms with that about what is of the, that they're going to suggest council do next.
And it, and it could be, nope, that's what happened the last time we, we did this, I don't believe it made it past the site plan, did it, right?
Well, no, they had, they actually did renderings, they did the design work, yeah, not construction work.
Yeah, just the, that makes sense that it costs that much money just for renderings or a conceptual.
Vote no.
I don't know.
I think it just petered out, um, actually. Yeah, I would have to look, but it honestly, it's just sort of, yeah, there was not the will to, to find that money and do it, just. I don't know if it was because something else was going on in 20, like 13, 14, 15. Just, I don't know if it was because something else was going on in twenty, like thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, when they were talking about the community center. Which they spent a lot of money to do design work on that for the down at Orange Grove. Um, and that kind of fizzled, I think, because of the school district bond. And they felt like they couldn't do that at the same time. I mean, as, I I think as we've talked about, the city has a lot of infrastructure needs. And the reality of something that's costing this much is that it's probably gonna be rolled into. Some kind of, you know, bond measure, some kind of. Infrastructure thing. And and that, you know. That decision has to be made, that research has to be done, and that's not happening this election. You know, it it will be. It'll, it'll take them some time to figure out that feasibility and.
The, the positive element is we have the current mayor and the mayor for town are both on. Uh, uh, probably the city council representatives on the ad hoc meeting. So, uh, presuming that. We come out of this process with a. We're gonna present that we wanna do it, uh, and we think you should. Uh, there'll be at least a legal will. To, to take it forward into the next election cycle.
Yeah, and and the recommendation could be, you know, to. Get commitments from elected officials, you know, I don't know, but um, it it is gonna take some time for the city to make a decision about. Um. How to move forward in terms of.
Engagement.
Getting the money, right? Um, I think our challenge or the ad hoc committee or staff, I don't know, will be to. Keep people interested during that, whatever that period of time is, and it takes them to to do this. So we're gonna have to. Have rehearsals and handouts and email updates or, you know, keep people engaged in some way.
Getting still where.
Yeah, and I think we can do it. I think it, we can do something fun, um, that keeps people thinking about it. Um, in that period of time.
I have two questions. So one is, um. If everything goes according to the timeline that you've laid out, I mean, like, when would we have an updated library? We're talking like five years, ten years?
Probably somewhere between those.
Okay. Um, and then my second question is, I had heard, I think that like the last, whenever the commissioner's congress was. Is so there's like a master park planning work too? Like, how does that intersect with any of this?
We're in the middle of the park.
Right, yeah, so the. I didn't even, wasn't very aware of the, the master parks plan. And then when I became aware of it, I was like, well, okay. These weave together, right? So we put the two consultants in touch with one another. So. Yeah, they have a whole different firm doing that. And and so, um. You know, they're asking questions similar to some of the questions we've asked. So we do wanna make sure that they're sharing information, that maybe. Uh, I think they're doing their engagement, their first round.
There's a survey that went out now.
Already? Oh, it did, okay. So there, we're kind of lagging, like, you know, we did ours, they're doing theirs, we're doing some more. So we did connect. The consultants and say, you know, we should make sure we're um, taking advantage of the fact that we're both doing this. Um, so to that extent, there are some collaborations.
But Dean, when you say like, we're in the middle of a park, I mean, but this park is part of your site planning, not their master.
I think that it, I mean, they will include it.
That's open, that's, I think, still an open question of, um, is. Be- because the library park is a park and we've had this conversation in this uh, body several times of where, where's the line? Where does it become, go from library to park and vice versa? Um, uh, I think the question would be, and that's as Catherine's saying. We wanna get the two integrated because we are in the middle of the park. It might make sense to. Uh, to combine the two, as you were pointing out, possibly into one bond measure to. Uh, update all the parks, including the library park, which includes the library, uh, park campus of the new community center. Uh, library, community center, senior center. So there's, there's still a lot of questions. Um, number one is money. It's gonna be, there, there are people who have, you know, we had somebody at a, a meeting, uh, with the new city manager who. Get up and said, this community, you tell them what you need, they're gonna give you the money. That's great. That's how it's been. Hopefully it'll continue to be that way. And if, if we uh, can present, the city can present a cogent plan. Of what it's going to do, why it's necessary, how it's going to benefit, not just the city currently. One of the, the things that the. Um, planners were uh, discussing is the um, twenty forty-five, the, 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 the. Best practices is you look at what is in twenty years from now. And what are your, what's gonna be your population, what's gonna be the, the type of the, the demographics of your population, uh, and, and building through that. Um, so that'd be the same thing of bringing the, you know, we're, we're bringing South Pasadena up to uh, twenty fifty. So, that's, there's a, there's a lot to go.
Yeah, I mean, there's, the city has a lot of extensive. Things in motion, whether it's the parks master plan, which is, we'll look at this park. I mean, it's looking at all the city's open spaces and outdoor stuff. Um, and we also have the Arroyo discussion about the Arroyo and how. Right. And then there's this, and then, as you know, there are streets, there's sewer, there's, I mean, there's a lot of stuff. So, um.
Everybody has a handy quarter of a billion dollars.
Question, how do you like differentiate here the community center items and the library center items? Cause I like see like, watch movies, performances and music, and I wonder how, where does that integrate as a community function and a library function? Or like lifelong learning and classes? Whereas like, I know there's a different programming maybe cycles. But I would think that those would be hand in hand.
There will be.
So is that like also really communicating that, that the library is gonna become the community center and the community center is gonna become the library or?
Not so much.
I don't think that's the right term.
That the three, the three uses will share the same facility. But not all of the same facilities because the stacks are obviously the stacks. Um, but. The same, the one, one thing that was raised was the, um, we have the request for the children's amphitheater.
Yeah.
It, it, the request doesn't say it can only be a children's amphitheater. So during the, the early morning. When that is going to be children's productions for it early afternoon, that's what it is. But in the evening, maybe it's an adult theater. Um, not adult, but theater for adults.
Yes.
Um, and uh, again, the, the same multipurpose room that could have a, a tai chi class with a senior center. Could have a children's. You know, uh, and could also be available for rental. Um, uh, that, I guess, the kitchen, the, the senior center kitchen could be a teaching kitchen. For the community and, or the library. So there's, there's all of the, most of the areas could have. Multi-function depending on time of day, day of week, week of month. Um, four and a three functions. And that, that way, we uh, make a better use of the square footage. Cause again, in the full presentation, which again, you can look at on the city's website, there are descriptions of. This, you should have this many square feet for this and this many square feet for that. Well, that's great. And if you add those up, it's a huge number, but if you go, oh, well. This square feet can be for this, this and this, now you get economies of scale. Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, did you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Um. It'll be great to see this come along. I hope that, um, you know, any input we can give to as it starts to come together, you know, that we can help. For you to take back on behalf of the trustees.
Please, please let, let me know. I, 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 I'm very happy to be that conduit. Do we have a meeting? I thought there was a meeting set up between group four and the library board of trustees.
Um, I don't know when that's supposed to be happening. I think that, um. I'll have to look at the schedule.
I'm pretty sure there is.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's in the, I think so. I think so. Although I'm trying to remember if when we did the public engagement, that that was sort of a.
Combo into that?
But they, they would definitely be happy to. Well, to you guys remotely, probably not, probably in person.
Yeah, and that's how, when, when we just had this meeting with them, it was by his end, so.
Yeah, so we can definitely do that. Um, I'm sure they would be willing to do that. Uh, I guess we would just want to find out, you know, what, what do we want to know from them, what, what is it that we would cover? And then to your point, Annie, about. You know, the dean is your mouthpiece on that committee. If we need to have an agenda item that's very, um. Formal about what you want him to say on behalf of trustees. We could, we should, we could do that and probably should do that.
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be a good idea. Um, what might make sense is we're going to, at our next meeting on July third. We decided we are going to meet on July third, let's get ahead for it. Um, uh, we're going to meet with group four again. They're gonna bring back. Based on what we talked about. I think that following that, once they, uh, uh, we, we know. More concretely what it is that they're presenting, I think would be a good time for them to meet with us. So maybe not at the, uh. July tenth meeting, but maybe we do have a meeting in August and have it just be a meeting with group four.
Yeah, or a joint community services commission, LVT commission.
I think that might have been what was on the calendar.
We had, well, yeah, it was, basically the public meeting was. Yeah, we, we have to schedule it.
But I think, I think that'd be an excellent idea because that way then we as a group can discuss with them. And then I can take back to the, uh, the, um, the ad hoc committee. Uh, result of that and then have, uh, it, I mean, from human sources.
Yeah, we'll talk, well, staff will talk a little bit more about that because, you know, if, if we're gonna do something formal here to make. A recommendation to the ad hoc, then community services should do that as well. Perhaps the friends should do something formal as well. Um, you know, these are the four bodies that are.
Did, did friends have a meeting with this board?
Uh, they did come in and do a presentation for us.
Yeah, the, in the first round of engagement.
Yeah.
They did in person with the senior citizen foundation and the friends.
Yeah.
Which makes sense because you.
Yeah.
Those groups are going to be vital to, uh, any fundraising and fundraising campaign.
I'll ask the, I'll ask group four about it the next time, uh, we meet, I think next week, about. How. About the best way to, to kind of do that and what's normal, what's typical. I mean, they're very, they've done this so much. They, they are, they are very, um. You know, how would that, that be done to come back with specific, you know, input, formalized input from these four. Bodies that are the most connected and engaged to this topic, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I'd love for us to, as a board trustees, if we can, to share also a resolution, you know, similar to you all at the ad hoc committee, the resolution. The more that we can share that directly with the city, direct it at the city, you know, that we're all in agreement or. Hopefully, most of us, the majority of us, however many of us, we need to be in agreement about whatever options are on the table that, that are reconsidered.
I think, Annie, I think that is a, a very astute observation and an excellent idea, um, that would go a long way towards. You know, allaying any fears that, uh, that this is just the ad hoc committee. So no, we have the ad hoc committee, the library board of trustees. But friends could maybe do something like that as well. Presuming that we as a board body.
Agreed, yeah.
Body of three, uh, and that way, that's a, sort of the three pillars of the stool.
And the community services commission, you know, if they, I feel like, um, it seems like if there's some convincing we can do, that, you know, the more we can.
I presume we're asking the senior center, uh, group as well to, to weigh in.
Yeah. Um, so if you can let us know, you know, how we could do that and maybe if there's any advice, guidance from group four.
Yeah. Maybe not, I'll ask them that.
Discuss next time.
Yeah, because I know Annie and I talked, um. Privately about kind of the fundraising piece and, um, that might be a conversation again. The, it's, it's not up to me, the city and the council, the council members, that's kind of their job is to decide how to go forward. But you guys have knowledge and thoughts and recommendations that you could discuss here and include. To share with others, you know, that the board thinks you should do this or that.
I would also ask that, uh, the individual members of this body, if you have any questions, concerns or comments. That you'd like me to share, I'm very happy to do so. Uh, and I can leave them, you know, with individual, it might be better if we. At our next meeting on July tenth, we coalesce, so maybe we could make an actual agenda item to discuss. Library Board of Trustee communication to the ad hoc community.
And I, and I think you're right in terms of timing, the ad hoc committee will meet on July third. The engagement will be like the middle of July to the end of August, I believe, or maybe the middle of September, middle of September, I think. Just because people are back to, you know, school and giving them a little more time. So somewhere in that August, the September, my, either August or September is probably when. We would have that discussion or have it partially and then finalize in September, early September. And I think that, um, we also, when we were looking at that timeline, and I don't remember if that was in the ad hoc committee or in the project. Team, we talked about, I think we're now talking about, uh, November, the first meeting in November for the council. So they're gonna still be doing a lot of work in September in terms of gathering it all together and. Leave it into the final product. So if you guys make decisions or recommendations in September, it's not too late. Yeah. And you'll have more to work with, you know, more information to, to know what is actually being, what's, what's gonna be the final. Thing that, and then you want to.
Thank you. That was a great update and a great discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, review of the library board trustee accomplishments and staff's work plan.
Here we just said, work awesome.
So I'm sorry that you didn't get this sooner, but I think we can, if not, you don't have to read the whole thing to, to, for us to. Go over it. So, um. Based on Sean's notes and my notes and listening to the recording, um, I think we. You know, I think we all agreed that we really met and accomplished a lot of the goals from last year in terms of the. Volunteer recognition activity, the, um, the, the policy work that we've done. And, um, the site planning. So that stuff is, I think, unless you have any strong feelings about that it's not reflecting your accomplishments. You know, that's sort of easy. Um, but I think the work plan, which is, uh, page.
Yeah.
Thirteen, if, if you look at the very bottom of the packet, page thirteen, is where we try to, um. Use all the input that you guys gave us last time to, to get this information. So I could be way off. Um, you know, again, it was Sean's notes, my notes.
I, I think the three, I think the three goals are what we talked about, right?
So.
The, uh, 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 well, so the advocacy in general about the importance of the library. Uh, I get, probably didn't wanna use the same word again, but it is sort of the site plan advocacy and, uh. Uh, making, making it aware.
And I think I mentioned that in paragraph four. So yeah, if you want to somehow tie together. The idea that the advocacy does relate to the site plan.
Yeah, I, I like, I like what you'd have here, but I'd also like to see, and I think we discussed, that we will. I, I don't, I don't wanna minimize it or a little bit the cheerleaders or, uh, the, the, uh, the idea that. I, I don't wanna put words in anyone else's mouth, but I think we're all agreed that it would be lovely to have a new, more modern building that could better serve. The library needs now and going forward.
So you're talking about number two and including the idea that your, that your, that your supporters and.
The border you're trying and being a community, uh, a community liaisons for, for the idea.
Yeah, got it.
Any other additions? That sounds like a good addition.
Yeah, and then, that, I, I, I hate to say it, but I think for the next decade, number three is gonna be on the list.
I mean, it is, it's on, it's your main thing in your municipal code that's your job. But, um, I think we tried to make it a little bit more like. Not just policy review, that's our job, but sort of what, what are, what's our end goal, or, you know. Yeah, it's your job to do the policies all the time, but if we could, you know, trying to do them in a, in a way that. Results in benefits.
Yeah, no, I love that. I love that. We're clear and concise for the benefit of the public and staff. I, I don't think there's any more. Uh, uh, important goal that we have is to, to benefit the public and the staff. Because without the staff, we don't have. Uh uh important goal that we have is to to benefit the public and the staff, because without the staff, we don't have. We just have a building. And all the public's falling apart at that, but I do want to come come in, uh our way, if you're not like that, but.
Um, so I think this recommendation is to review it, we can take an amendment to it, I think, to add that and approve it today.
Um, you can, if you're if you're good and you're close enough, yeah, you could just say amended as. Or I can bring it back next month and you guys can look at it one more time.
Anyone want to have to bring back another version?
I'm ready to go with it.
So let's so let's just so let's see, it's like I'm prepared for the future, um uh I can do. Do you want it at the front, do you want um?
No, I think we, I think the way you we'd add it, it makes sense, we're gonna educate ourselves and then go talk rather than go talk and then educate ourselves.
But where do you want me to put that I that idea that?
Educated about the issues that will arise, the new facilities built, the position to advise on practical matters. Uh and best practices innovation in modern public libraries and to uh to share that with. Uh with the public and um what do we call our our, they're not customers, they're not quite and patrons.
They like to call them patrons, but sometimes we call them customers.
Yeah, so with the public, uh especially library patrons.
But you want that in as part of the first one or the second?
Second, number two.
Okay.
I have another sentence, it's not super long, yeah, share. What Dean said in the recording.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what.
Today, can can you um read back what what I just said?
I don't know if I can or you, I I probably can't, I would have to, I what I will. Watching the video again, um maybe I can do it and send it out via email and you guys can just.
When do we need to turn this into?
Um, they haven't given us a final uh date, but they said probably September. Yeah, but if we do it like via email, like if you wanna, if you wanna approve it. With the caveat that we're gonna add the concept of their leading and.
I I I think I'm I'm willing to make a motion that these three goals, the the superheadings of these three goals. Public library advocacy, site planning and advocacy, um uh or what's another word for advocacy? I've been saying it twice. Hang on, let's look that crap up.
I mean, I I can come up with a way to, I I mean, I think I can come up with a nice way to say that. That's cheerleader idea.
Recommendation?
That's the special role that you guys play is.
Site planning and supporting. Promoting.
Promoting, yeah, I like promoting. Site planning and promoting.
And library policies as our three super headings for the goals, and then we can fine tune. Um, again, I'm I'm good with one and three as they are, two, I just think we wanna tack on at the end, the idea that we're gonna share. This information um in in a in a positive and um. Meaningful manner with uh the public in general and patrons in particular. I don't know if we can say for the purpose of uh. Ensuring uh community support.
I mean, that might be the 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 main piece of your, you're gonna be actively. Um, at the forefront of.
We wanna bring people in.
Engaging the community around us, I mean, that's like your roles to do to do that, I'll I'll um.
I like that word, by the way.
So yeah, it's not should be site planning and engagement, is that overall anything?
Community engagement?
Yeah.
That might, I mean, cause if you, to me.
We don't really need to have and, site planning, community engagement, that's what we're doing, we're engaging with the community about the site plan.
Well, but you also talked at length last time about this is gonna go on for twenty years, we should start looking farther ahead about. So that was, that's kind of what it captures now, is this idea that you guys were gonna start to really think about things that nobody else is thinking about yet. Cause it's far off, um so if we change it to, if we say site planning, community engagement without the and. It it kind of doesn't set you up for.
Capture. And it is.
Site planning and community engagement, do you think that's okay?
Yeah. But I will send.
What's the community engagement about?
Well, well, it'll. Yeah, it'll it'll be down there, I'll send it, I'll 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 send something to you guys via email and. We won't have a conversation about it over email, obviously, but you guys.
Based on what on what one, two, and three already say.
Right.
More than confident that you will coalesce and do a cogent statement.
Yeah, I think you can just make the motion that, you know, approved with additions as discussed.
Okay.
You know.
Do we still need to reply to your emails with approval?
No, but I would run it by you because again, if the amendments are open, right, I mean, you're gonna say. We approve this with the with the ten, the amendments. Yeah, yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six uh trustees uh work plan goals. As written, uh one and three and two uh as discussed for open amendment to be determined. Within the next few weeks.
Min, were you the second?
Yes. Can we call the room?
Sure, Annie Chang Long.
Yeah.
Edward Pearson.
Yes.
Min Sun Meker.
Yeah.
Dean Serwin.
No, just kidding, yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Okay, library operations update, Kathy.
Yeah, so I just um, these are uh from what we send to council over the last few weeks, we send a weekly update to the council, so I just threw these together. You obviously know that the team room is um, if we, the the base pieces are finished, a lot of the finishing touches are not finished, we're still waiting for our. Neon sign and our signage and some of our kind of decor, um but they're they're loving it, they love the furniture. It's really nice, they're packed in there still, there's not enough space for them, but it's really nice, it's it's um. It's been appreciated by the teams for sure, um it's the Walk and Talk Book Club, that's been a a successful program. Um, so that's happening still on a regular basis, this was kind of exciting, Olivia was contacted by um. Uh, an individual up in the Pacific Northwest saying, hey, my family, um, you know, grew up in South Pasadena, was based in South Pasadena. I have all this material, I don't have kids, would you, would you want, you know, would you be able to pick care of it, so we have, um, they donated. A number of uh video, videos, like, you know, that they're they're actually, I already digitized, so the family digits.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, we don't have to do the digitization, um and so it it's great, right, I mean, it's. It's, you don't get a lot of imagery of the city, which would have been neat, but you do get this particular home, but even just to see. Like life in South Pasadena in nineteen ten, whatever, um so it's really neat and also some other materials. That are print materials that I I haven't seen, but just really nice and kind of exciting that that happened. Um, so we'll see what Olivia ends up doing with that, and eventually it'll be available for people to look at online. Should they want to do that, we finally finished up the uh sustainability grant, which we had, remember, we did all the programming. And we did the seed library, um and the the first repair cafe, so the last piece of that was the signage for the park. So there's a, I don't know if you've seen it in the front, there's a nice board that talked about the history of the park, talks about the indigenous people. Um, gives a little anecdote about what the park was like, kind of in the early twentieth century, and then um some nice. Uh tree signage on not all of the trees, obviously, but on selected trees. Uh, so that was great to get that wrapped up, and then summer reading, um this is from last week, but on the first day of summer reading, we signed up three hundred and ten. Says kids, but I don't, maybe it was adults too, but um three hundred and ten people. And I have no idea how many now, but it's probably a lot, I need to find out, and then this is just uh the wrap up from yesterday's event, it was.
Oh my god, am I in there?
It was really well attended, it was a lot of fun, um it was great, I mean, we were there, right, but there were a lot of adults, like. No, wait, like.
So much fun, yeah, yeah, like I had a lot of adults that came up and were like. I felt like that was just as much for my children as it was for me, that was so much fun, yeah.
It was really, um, yeah, it was, it was all family, all ages.
I think we roughly counted Kona Heights, I think we had like three hundred and ten or three hundred and twenty. That Lori was kind of counting people coming loosely, so yeah.
And that, thank you so much to the friends, they funded that completely, and it was a huge hit last year, and you guys helped last year.
We gotta do it again. We do another one.
You mean like.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a big wrap party, but we, I could get some people on board budget wise, so you talk to your people. I'll talk to mine, yeah, just throwing that up there, you know.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
The amount of community engagement I was able to do, I on behalf of the library or the friends was just really, really great talking to people. About how they use this space, how much they love it, how much they enjoyed the event, people that had no idea what wonderful Wednesdays. Were but walked by and plan on attending them, tying it back into one of these other things on here. The little book bags you got for the community or for the our volunteer event, those were a hot topic yesterday amongst our volunteers. That were like, oh, I see your bag and other just patron thing, oh my god, we love that bag, so. I just wanted to add an extra thanks on that, I think those little tokens. You know, go along with, um and I don't know, I had a great time at that wonderful Wednesday, I always do.
Yeah, that comedian juggler magician guy was perfect.
Yeah, he was super funny.
How many kids I had conversations with about that tennis racket, that was the best part, yeah, it was like.
There was a giant tennis racket that he did things with, um, the good thing too, it's a it's a wonderful Wednesday goes to then July and we'll be doing that. Next round of community outreach with that kiosk again, I was like, do we have to? Yeah, you have to do a kiosk, okay, but we can take the kiosk out there where we have, you know, a hundred people and and then all the community servicing stuff. In the summer, there's the movies, there's Shakespeare in the Park, there's the concert, so we'll definitely, you know, hit a couple of those, just like we did in the first round. But it'll be easy, cause these guys will be, maybe that's the day we do.
Yeah, and.
Get people out there.
Yeah.
So that's the uh that's my pri- my primary update, I will tell you, uh I have an employee who's on maternity leave, she had a lovely little baby boy. And everybody's well, and um he screws a button, so it's very exciting, but uh we'll be uh covering her duties for a while. Um, and I'm trying to think what else, I mean, it's just, it's been incredibly uh busy, you know, a budget season and um. Summer reading program and the ad hoc committee and incredibly busy, so I don't know, I'm forgetting to tell you, but.
Can I ask, do you don't have plans like in case of ICE or anything, like, have you guys, do you guys have emergency alternative plans? If something happens, like if ICE were to come into this library?
Oh, ICE, um, so the city, they actually put out a press release last week, I think, and they put it out before.
Couple days ago.
Yeah, I mean, they they are following the law, which I have not. Read deeply into what that means, but basically, I don't think that they have to cooperate. I guess I should look that up and make sure I know what I'm doing, we probably call the police to find out what to do, but um, but I think that uh, yeah, I actually don't know. What I'm supposed to do if that happens, I'll have to find out, good question, but the city does have a stance and a and and a plan for what to do. Um, I just don't know what it is, never even thought of it, to be honest, but you know, that that's a good thing, you should be prepared in terms of what.
Things to prepare for, just to know like what in your in the staffs.
Yeah, like what do we say, what do we do, yeah, that would be, I'm I'm glad you brought it up, cause that would be incredibly like shocking to have that happen and be like. I don't know what to do, so I'd much rather know in the end.
Yeah, and you know, hopefully.
I mean.
Hopefully it'll help me that you have to encounter, but at least, no.
I know that, you know, people have said to the city council, we wanna be a sanctuary city, and basically what the what the city has said is. We're not taking the action to be a sanctuary city, but because of the laws, you are sort of a thing, I mean, it's California, so the laws already protect. People in some ways or something, so um, yeah, I I'll have to look.
I think it's like, yeah, the staff knew their rights, knowing what they can do, what they can't do, it's helpful to tell individuals what they are, but they, you know, can't can't do, just.
Yeah, you know, not that it's their job, definitely not their job. No, we used to have, we have these little cards that told people what to do if you're, you know, immigration, but we. Decided they were probably out of state, so we threw them away.
There are, I I believe there are new cards specifically around there.
I'm sure there are, uh, we also.
And the friends would probably be happy paying for any printing costs on that, I would have to ask my board, but if if there was prohibitive things like that. I think my board would be happy to. Help, but you're probably right, there's probably plenty of free resources, I think it probably gets sticky when those are uh like a. Democratic National Committee is the one that stamps the bottom of it or something or.
I think that, you know, reference librarians, right, so if people come in and ask us, what are my rights, what do I do, we're gonna help them find that information, but but in terms of. Putting out a a big stack of, here's what to do, I'm not.
Different thing.
But um if the information's there, I have it, but I would, if you're gonna look into that, I also think you might want to have like family preparedness resources. There's a lot that county office of education, department of mental health, the county has put out for families with children, so that they can. Like there are a bunch of things they need to get in order, um so there's a lot of family preparedness.
Doesn't come home from work.
Via the the county, which the which uh both the county, the LA County Office of Education and the LA County Department of Mental Health, I can send them to use. Their resources that they're giving out to parents to be prepared and to like, make sure, you know, they have a plan in place for guardians and all that stuff, it needs to be documented.
Yeah, I will, if you share that with me, I'll share it with the librarians, so that they can be prepared to help people with that.
I know that they're not, it's not their job to be everything to everyone.
I mean, if someone, if we, they may have already done some of this themselves, um because that's what they do, but if but if somebody. If I can give them, they can do some research and be prepared if the question comes, but um, they're pretty good, they know. Well, they're pretty good at helping people find the information that they're looking for, but this will be a nice, make it easy.
We were working on a Girl Scouts project and I had to send some moms to ACE to get something and there were ICE agents there.
And ACE's hard work.
Yeah.
Like tonight, so.
It's like the big thing, working in like construction industry is a really uncomfortable scene. Home Home Depots right now, um any kind of lumberyards, it's palpable. And as someone that goes to that stuff weekly, if not daily basis, it's, this week has been really heart wrenching. For all of our communities.
And I don't know if it's true, but I did hear they were at a library, so.
In in.
In like San Diego Valley, like not here, but kind of wise.
Yeah, interest is, you know, again, in South Pasadena, we often sort of fly under the radar, you know, we don't get the First Amendment people, you know.
Which is also one of the city's decision not to make any official declaration around a sanctuary city, their biggest. Our council member's biggest defense in not doing, wanting to do that is their understanding that they don't want to. Bring any attention to the city, whether or not that's morally morally an issue, that's not my job, so.
Right, like if.
Bring that up to the city council, not you guys.
And that's all I.
Any other questions for Kathy on operations? Um, or for communications, board president communications, um I love the summer reading program, I always do. But this year my son was volunteering and so a special place in my heart, and he has been wonderfully trained by Ms. LaTisia. And it's just been um really fun to be on the other side of it, and he like loves it so much, like he still loved being part of it, now he loves volunteering for it, so. It's so cool, and we run such a great program for the volunteers and for the kids, and I think that means a lot for kids in this community, so. Uh, Dean, I mean, can. Uh, Dean, any communications, other things?
Um, I've, I've kind of already hit on points. Uh, the wonderful Wednesdays was wonderful and it was Wednesday. Um, really enjoyed that, thought that it was a great way to start the summer reading program off with a bang. Um, I want to commend staff for uh, getting the uh, Band-Aids that we're going to need to keep putting on this building done and getting that floor repaired, repaired and replaced. Uh, it looks great. It works great. Um, uh, and uh, we just get to keep pushing forward.
I don't really have anything.
I'm sorry.
We're not east of it.
Must be a busy month, Ed. Oh, logistically, I will not be able to attend a July meeting.
Oh, sorry, that was my update too. I will not be able to July meeting.
Okay, so what we think about?
We have form or not. Yeah, and we'll just think about what's on the agenda because no one, there are going to be things we're not going to want to do without you, or if two of you aren't there. I mean, if we really need to do something with everyone, I don't know what your schedules are, but a special meeting on a different week. So um, when exactly are you, are you both gone? Do you know? Like from when to when?
I'm just out of town that week.
Just that one week, okay.
I'm out from the twenty-sixth to July eleventh. Sorry, I am actually out of town the sixteenth through the eighteenth of July, so.
And the basically the second week of July. Okay, um, I don't, I can't even think right now what would be on the agenda, but um, we'll think about it. Yeah, no, thank you for letting.
Step back a second because I, I saw my notes for friends that is on and I.
Oh, yes.
Triggered a question. At the last meeting, we had uh, discussed at communicating with the city attorney.
I was going to talk about that in the library director comments because it's not really on your agenda, so I can do that when we come around.
Brian's a library communications.
Yeah, um, next, our normal June meeting is pushed a week later because it's on Juneteenth and this facility will be closed. So we're meeting a week later. Uh, we had a great time at Wonderful Wednesdays. We had some good uh, volunteer turnout on behalf of our group. I have eight or nine different volunteers come up for us. Um, what else? Uh, we're working on a lot of policies right now that are almost greenlit for our library staff to be able to use Amazon a little bit more fluidly. There's a bunch of other little issues and things we're working on, but it's, we have an amazing team that's doing a lot of internal work to hopefully simplify and make things easier and also give our library staff a little bit easier discretion to use the um, the amazing stuff we're able to offer. Um, did you guys want to talk now about what?
Yes.
You're talking about? Or is it that go next? I'm done then. Yeah, okay, good, then I'm done.
Points. Uh, they, they, again, wonderful Wednesdays happened yesterday. Uh, they gave chairs for the teen room. Uh, they, at present, they've already got a hundred sixty-four members and given seven, more than seventeen thousand dollars, which is ahead of the last year. So they're going to be in a position to continue to uh, support the library. Uh, they gave out their first scholarship. Now, very exciting. Uh, and they expressed interest in how the friends can advocate on behalf of libraries in general and is interested in working with library board of trustees to the extent that either or both can, which then dovetails into.
And is that, is, so I can talk about that now? Um, so I was slow in getting the question to her, but I have posed the question to her, but I haven't gotten the answer back. Um, so I'll just have to share with you the email once I hear back from her. I mean, I think we sort of already know, I think the question is, is it a, if it's a, if it's a specific piece of legislation, right? You can't advocate. So I don't know if budgetary funding things are considered, you fall into that category. I mean, it is a budget bill, right? So it is legislation of some kind, but um, so I, I, we just have to find out what we can do or not to. And so I posed the question.
Versus advocacy.
Yeah, I posed the question, but I mean, I specifically said to her, you know, can we, can they write letters? Can they sign petitions? Can they, you know, like a lot of the things that people are asking us to do right now, which is sign the petition or send a letter to your congressperson. Um, so I asked, I asked the question, but I am sorry, I can't report.
What would be lovely to know if we can do is can the library board of trustees, in conjunction with the friends of the library, uh, have an event where we educate the community as to the importance of a free uh, accessible public library?
Well, I think you can do that. I mean, you know.
But it does. What level of?
Don't you have any, any, okay, here's, where's the line?
Yeah.
Where's the line on what we can?
Yeah, we, we want to be confident that you're doing our thing. So I will, um, I'll pose that question as well.
I'm just going to say one more thing before I forget, and it's not going to be business handled right now, but I think we were also wondering about the chairs and tables. Is there an MOU that we need to have over you guys, over? Are we going to off-line that? Yeah, but that's just something I didn't say now, but go away. That's all.
I was just going to say, maybe it's like different for the city, but um, like I work for the county and we also cannot, we cannot advocate unless our board of supervisors is also behind it. So like if your city council says like, we have to resolution or something that says like, we're sending a five sig- I don't know how many council members there are, but like, that's how the county board works. It's like you send a five signature board letter to the state or whomever to say like, I'm against this or for this, then everybody in the county can do the same.
I asked the same question. I, um, I asked if this is on their legislative platform. I don't think it is. For like general cutting, you know, federal funding is not going to be probably on the legislative platform. Um, so I asked that question though. Do they take position on bu- budget bills? Or do they only take positions on very small, you know, very specific bills? So we'll find out. I think that um, because of staffing, I don't know that the legislative platform stuff is, um, if anyone's super on top of that right now. Plus it's not, you know, it's not billing the season so much right now. Um, but I did ask that question perfectly because yes, if the city council has taken a position, then it probably so triples down and anybody can take position once the city council has taken a formal position.
So we will see.
You can forward us the email then. Yeah, as soon as I get, yeah, as soon as I hear back, I'll send that out to you then.
Um, well, with no further items or comments from staff or forum members, I will now adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-two, yeah, for our next meeting in July.
Hey, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sean.